Alright, that should be enough time for y'all, man. If y'all don't have your pencil and paper yet, I'm sorry to hear it, but we are going to dive into today's study session. So here we go. Arithmetic reasoning, right? Boom, these are the steps that we're gonna follow anytime that we try to solve for a question, okay? The steps actually make sense, alright? I say that because sometimes I think a lot of y'all try to freestyle your questions, right? And I don't recommend it. Don't try to freestyle your questions. Don't try to, you know, think that you're a math genius, but follow these steps, okay? You wanna know what is the question asking? What information is the question given to us, AKA what do we know? Um, what are we solving for? How can we use what we know to solve our equation? And does our work check out, alright? So these are definitely, these are gonna be the steps that we need in order to solve each question, okay? Um, what is the question asking us? What information is given to us? What are we solving for? How can we use what we're solving for to solve our equations? And does our work check out? If you guys see me kinda distracted, I promise you, it's not because I'm actually distracted. It's just that I'm lighting crew, I'm camera crew, video crew, sound crew, DJ in the background, and uh, the math tutor all in one, alright? So I'm just doing various things, um, checking to see if y'all have any questions, comments, or concerns. Um, so that's what I'm doing, alright? But I promise I'm paying attention teaching every one of you. So here we go. Here we go. Let's jump into our first question. Boom, what is the volume of a cardboard box measuring 12 inches long by 14 inches wide by 10 inches tall? Alright, so I'm gonna give y'all like 30 seconds to get like a quick head start. How would you solve this, okay? If you got your phone and you wanna use your phone, then great. If you've got your calculator and you wanna use your calculator, then great. However, this is gonna be the question. What is the volume of a cardboard box measuring at 12 inches long by 14 inches wide by 10 inches tall? Welcome to today's study session. Alright, so if you're solving this question, or if you're stumped already for whatever reason, just understand that we're talking about volume, alright? So volume is length times width times height, alright? So that's a little, that's a little uh, head start for you, alright? Let me see if y'all can see this. Can y'all see this? Comment in the, comment in the chat box for me. Alright, anytime you're solving for volume, this is gonna be what you do, alright? Length times width times height. So you go back to the question, right? Does it give you the length? Does it give you the width? And does it give you the height? If so, then y'all are cooking. Alright, so let's jump into this without a calculator, without uh, anything but pen and paper, alright? So the cardboard box, the cardboard box is measuring how long? 12 inches long, right? So we know that the length is 12 inches long, right? Uh, what about the width? 14 inches in width, right? So we come here, 14 inches in width. And then our height is 10 inches. So I'm gonna put an H for height. Boom, right? So we got our length, we got our width, and we got our height, alright? Now what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna start multiplying, okay? So I know that I have to multiply my length times my width. So I'll come over here, 12 times 14. If you are a part of today's session, alright? These are gonna be the same questions that we did last time, plus a little more depending on time, alright? So 12 times 14, 4 times 2, we know is 8. 4 times 1 is 4, okay? Anytime you're multi- multiplying uh, more than just single digits, we have to put a placeholder for a zero down here. And then we go again, 1 times 2 is 2. 1 times 1 is 1, boom. What do we do next? We add these two numbers here, right? So 8 plus 0, we know is 8. 4 plus 2, we know is 6. 1 plus nothing is 1, boom, 168. What is the next step, right? We're gonna take this 168, and we also have to multiply by our height, which is 10. So 168, if we're just moving down, times 10. I'm gonna actually do it out, and then I'm gonna actually give y'all like, you know, a, a, a tip, okay? 0 times all of these numbers is 0, right? Anything times 0 is 0, so we could put, if you wanna write it like this, 3 zeros, sure. And then we put a placeholder 0, okay? 1 times 8 is 8, 1 times 6 is 6, 1 times 1 is 1. We add this together, we get 1,680. Is our volume. Alright, we go to our answer key. Do we have 1,800, 1,680? Yes, we do. D being the correct answer. I wanna hear y'all's honest input. A question like this, is it easy? Is it difficult? Like, go ahead and tell me, but keep it real. Is this uh, is this easy for you? Is it difficult? Is it like in the middle? Um, let me try to gauge y'all's difficulty when it comes to this uh, math question. Volume type questions. Oh, another thing, anytime you're multiplying by 10, you could honestly just take this 0 and put it at the end of the number. It'll give you the answer 1,680, alright? That's not bad. I don't think that was a bad one. Alright, without any further ado, we are going to jump into the next question. Boom. How many cubic inches of sand can a cardboard box measuring 12 inches long by 14 inches wide by 10 inches tall contain? Alright, the reason why this is such a great question is because I wanna show y'all one thing. In our last question, it was asking us volume. In this question, it's asking us the same thing, but it's written differently, right? So why do I say it's written differently? Because this question is asking how many cubic inches, right? So whenever you see the words cubic inches, whenever you see the word cubic rather, okay? It is automatically referring to volume, okay? Some of y'all might remember in math class that, you know, they might be asking a question like, what is 2 cubed, right? So they would write the number 2 here, and then they would have like a 3 up top here. This 3 meaning cubed, right? Why is it a 3? Because anything cubed is referring to three dimensional, okay? Three dimensions, which is why we have a number 3 here. The cardboard box that they're referring to is three dimensional, right? We have length, we have width, and we have height. Three dimensions, so it's cubed, alright? So I'll be honest with you, this is the same exact question that we did last time. We used the same formula. Length times width times height, right? And we actually have the same variables, which is 12, 14, and 10. So if you were a part of last questions, we multiplied all those together, 12, 14, and 10. Right, we add it all together, and then we ended up getting 1,680. Alright, I promise you I'm not a genius. We just did this out in the last question, that's how I know the answer. So D would be the correct answer. Bam! Bam bam bam. Alright, so we're gonna move on to the next question. I hope y'all are doing alright so far. For whatever reason, if you're not doing so good, just go ahead and comment any question that you have, and I'll actually try to answer your question to the best of my ability, but no promises, alright? No promises. Alright, so I'm gonna go ahead and clear the screen, and then we getting into the next one. Alright, here we go. How far, how far will your platoon go if you march for 3 hours at 6 miles per hour? Alright? I'm gonna give y'all like 10 seconds on this one. Alright, 10 seconds is up, right? So how far will your platoon go if you march for 3 hours at 6 miles per hour? We're just warming up, alright? I would say this is a easy question. So what are we gonna do? We know that you're marching for 3 hours, right? And how far, how many miles are you going? 6 miles. 3 times 6 is 18. Does everybody understand that? 18 miles. Okay, do we have any questions whatsoever? How far will your platoon go? Oh, hold up. For every 1 hour, you're going 6 miles. Let me see if I could think of a better way to explain it for those who have trouble visualizing, okay? So you're going 6 miles every hour, okay? 6 miles every hour, alright? And going 6 miles every hour, you can honestly write this out, you know, 6 miles in the first hour, 6 miles in the second hour, 6 miles in the third hour, right? Add them all up together, after those 3 hours, you get 18, alright? I've learned actually that a lot of y'all don't struggle necessarily with the math per se, but you do struggle with understanding the question. So I just try to find different ways to explain the same question, and then for some people that actually helps, alright? So at the end of the day, the answer is gonna be C, 18 miles. Boom! Alright, if y'all need to screenshot this, do it real quick, cuz I'm about to clear the screen, and we're about to move on to the next one. Alright, I'm gonna give y'all a little head start on this question. Joanne just turned 37. For 12 years, she's dreamed of traveling to Hawaii to become a beach bum. To finance this dream, she needs to save a total of $15,000. How much does Joanne need to save each year if she wants to become a beach bum by her 40th birthday? Alright? So y'all take a good minute to try to get a head start on this one, and then we about to jump into it. Alright, alright, alright. Y'all doing alright so far? Alright. Here we go. Joanne just turned 37 years old, alright? So that's relevant information. She just turned 37. Why is that relevant? Let's stay tuned to find out, right? So she's 37 years old. For 12 years, she's dreamed of traveling to Hawaii to become a beach bum. Alright, cool. To finance this dream, she needs to save a total of $15,000. How much does Joanne need to save each year if she wants to become a beach bum by her 40th birthday? Alright, so we know that the goal is, the goal to go to Hawaii will be on her 40th birthday, right? She's 37 years old. So we know we have, we're gonna take this 40, we're gonna subtract 37. We know that we're working with a 3-year goal, okay? 3-year goal, why is that important? Because the question is saying, how much does Joanne need to save each year if she wants to become a beach bum, right, by her 40th birthday? So it's a 3-year goal, alright? She needs to save a total of $15,000. So we're gonna take this $15,000, and we are going to divide it by the amount of years that we have to save it, in order to find out how much we need each year to meet the goal, alright? So this looks kind of intimidating if you're somebody who's like, oh, that's a lot of digits, but it's really not, right? 3 doesn't go into 1, however, 3 goes into 15. We know a total of 5 times evenly. You can bring this comma up, and all these zeros can pop up. $5,000, okay? She needs to save a total of $5,000 every single year, alright? In order to fact-check our work, we could take this $5,000 answer that we have, okay? Multiply it by the 3 years that we have. We know that 3 times 0, so 3 zeros, and then 3 times 5, we know is 15. What, 3 years, we should save $15,000, okay? So this checks out. This 5,000 actually checks out, alright? We go to our answer key, look at that, B, $5,000. How we doing so far? How we doing so far? I hope good. I hope we doing alright, man. I hope we doing alright, cuz we haven't even warmed up too much yet. But if y'all have any questions, comments, concern, go ahead and let me know. Also, if you haven't already, if you're joining this live session, and you haven't hit that subscribe button, y'all, come on. Hit that subscribe button, alright? So I can let you know, welcome to the family. I'm gonna try my best to do questions like these more and more, so that way y'all can kinda get a better understanding of the ASVAB, and how they ask questions, and you know, the way that you should be thinking, and all that fun stuff, okay? So go ahead, comment again in the lot, in the live chat, or the YouTube replay chat. Um, and let me know how you're doing. But screenshot if you need a screenshot, because if not, I am about to clear the screen, and we about to move on. Alright, so this might be as difficult as it gets, actually, for the ASVAB type questions. Let's see if we can figure it out. A security guard walks the equivalent of 6 city blocks when they make a circuit around a building. If they walk at a pace of 8 city blocks every 30 minutes, how long will it take them to complete a circuit around the building? Assuming they don't run into any thieves. Alright, so like always, I'm gonna give y'all a minute to try to jump on the question. Pay attention to what it's asking. Try to write down as much relevant details as possible, okay? Cuz it's all gonna help you. These arithmetic reasoning questions while I wait, right? So these arithmetic reasoning questions honestly is um, is, it's like riddles, right? They're gonna give you a piece of information at a time, and you're gonna actually be the one to try to put the, the pieces, you're gonna try to put the pieces together to the puzzle. Does that make sense? So, um, that's why you have to pay attention to all the clues that are in the question. Alright, so read the question over once or twice, and then we are going to solve it together as a team. Alright, are we ready? Are we ready? Let's see what we get for an answer. Alright, so let me read the question over again. A security guard walks the equivalent of 6 city blocks when they make a circuit around the building, alright? If they walk at a pace of 8 city blocks every 30 minutes, how long will it take them to complete a circuit around the building, assuming they don't run into any thieves? So what do we know? We know that this security guard walks 6 blocks around the building. So we know that 6 blocks is equivalent to 1 lap around the building. Fair to say? Okay? Let me clean that up. Alright, so we know that 6 city blocks is equivalent to 1 lap around the building. Alright, that's fair. What else do we know? If this dude walks at a pace of 8 city blocks every 30 minutes, alright, so they just give us how fast this guy is going. Every 30 minutes, he goes about 8 city blocks, right? Alright, cool, cool, cool. So he's going 8 city blocks every 30 minutes. Bam. How long will it take him to complete a lap around the building? Alright, so first we are going to start with this fact right here, okay? This guy is going 8 blocks. This guy or girl is going 8 blocks every 30 minutes. So let's try to figure out, let's try to reduce that and figure out how many blocks, how many minutes that is per block, alright? So what we're gonna do is we're gonna take this 30 minutes, we're gonna divide it by 8, okay? Cuz that would give us how fast he's going per block, right? So 8 does not go into 3, however, it does go into 30. 3 times, 8 times 3, we know is 24. Boom, we're gonna subtract, 30 minus 24, it's gonna give us 6, okay? 8 doesn't go into 6, so we need to add a little something, something over here, right? Um, and then drop this 0 down. I hope y'all remember that in division class, giving us 60. This decimal can pop up over here, right? 8 goes into 60, a total of 7 times, boom, 7 times 8. Looks like I'm gonna run out of space down here. I hope y'all can still see. 7 times 8 is 56. We're gonna subtract. That gives us 4, okay? We need to add another 0, boom, alright? And what are we gonna do? Drop this 0 down also. Giving us 40. 8 goes into 40, a total of 5 times evenly. 5 times 8 is 40 itself. Giving us 0. Hope y'all can see that. Alright, so what did this tell us? This guy goes 1 block every 3.75 minutes. Okay? I'm gonna pause the rest of the question, right? And I'm gonna take y'all actually to the answer key. So for y'all who are very impatient when it comes to the ASVAB, right? They do questions like these all the time, because they're counting on the fact that you're a lazy math solver. What do I mean by lazy math solver? I mean the fact that you will partially solve the question, see the partial answer in the answer key, and then select that answer as if it's the correct answer for the question. So we got 3.75. If you go to the answer key, you'll actually notice that B here is 3.75 minutes. So you would actually think that this is the correct answer when in fact it's not, okay? This 3.75 only represents that this guy goes 1 block. If I can write this small over here. We divided, right? This guy goes 1 block every 3.75 minutes. Does that make sense? Alright, but the question is asking, how long will it take him to complete a circuit around the building, assuming that they don't run into any thieves? So we have to take this 3.75, right? And do something with it, okay? So he goes 1 block every 3.75 minutes, okay? So how many blocks is equivalent to 1 lap around the building? Well, we wrote that down in the beginning. Alright, this guy needs to go 6 blocks to, to add up to 1 lap, alright? So what do we do? We take this 3.75. 3.75, alright? And then we are going to multiply that by 6. Boom, let's see what we get. 6 times 5 is 30. Put our 0 down there, our 3 up top here. 6 times 7 is 42, 43, 44, 45. Boom, put our 4, our 5 down there, and put our 4 up here. 6 times 3 is 18, plus 4 is 22. And we'll drop our decimal down, 22.50, okay? 22.50 minutes. Alright, so we go back to our question. How long will it take him to complete a circuit around the building? Right, it'll take him 22.50 uh, minutes. Go back to our answer key now, and we'll actually see, ironically, right? No pun intended. We will see over here that our answer is C, 22.50 minutes, alright? I think that's as hard as the ASVAB will really pitch it to you, uh, to some degree. If you have a good understanding of what that question is asking, then you're actually doing pretty good, okay? However, don't fall for the mistake of selecting B as an answer. B is not the right answer. They do this all the time. They set little traps for you, okay? It's an actual, you know, pretty clever test, alright? Because they wanna see, do you actually comprehend what we're asking? Or are you just kinda the person that goes along through the motions? And when you see the first thing that jumps out at you, you select it, right? So it's just, it's a strategic test, alright? B is not the correct answer. C is the correct answer, alright? So y'all go ahead and take a second to screenshot this real quick. Um, let me know how y'all are doing. Let me know how y'all are feeling. And honestly, if you are still with me. I hope y'all are, honestly. Alright, after y'all finish screenshot, I'm gonna go ahead and clear the screen, and we are gonna move on to the next question. Boom! Alright, if apples are on sale at 15 for $3, what is the cost of each apple? Alright, I'm gonna give y'all like 30 seconds to try to work through this, 30-second head start. And then I'll jump in with you, and we can see, um, we can see how y'all are doing. My bad, man. I'm over here jamming. I'm over here vibing, you know what I mean? Oh, my bad. Alright, let me see, oh. Good question. So the key is by the word, how many you have to multiply? You referring to the last question, or you referring to this question? Let me know which question you are referring to. Alright, y'all ready to hop on this apple question? I hope so. Here we go. If apples are on sale at 15 for $3, 15 for $3, I want y'all to digest that, 15 for $3. Yes, so you will have to read the word, right? In the last question, you will have to read the word in order to understand. You'll have to read how the question is worded in order to understand if you're multiplying, if you're dividing, um, all of that fun stuff. All of the clues are gonna be in the wording to each question, alright? I might, and I might try to make an emphasis on that moving forward, so that way you guys can understand like how to know what function to use. Multiplication, division, subtraction, addition, so great question, alright? In this question with the apples, if apples are on sale at 15 for $3, what is the cost of each apple, right? By the wording of the question, I understand that I would have to divide, okay? I wouldn't multiply, I wouldn't subtract, I wouldn't add. I'm trying to figure out how much for each apple, okay? How much for each apple, okay? So I know that I'm gonna be dividing. I know in division, they taught you guys to put the big number in the box, right? At least that's how they taught me in school. Put the big number in the box, and everything should work itself out, right? So if this is the case, you know, 3 divided by 15, or 15 divided by 3, will give us a 5. Again, for all the lazy math solvers, right? Before y'all even continue, you would just see that the number, you would think that the number starts with a 5, and then you'll go over to your answer chart, and then circle A as a correct, correct answer. That is not the correct answer, okay? So just make sure that we set up our question correctly, right? How would I know that's not the correct answer? Great question. So if each apple costs 50 cents, right? And this guy, and the sale is 15 for $3, if I take this 50 cents and I times it, matter of fact, if I take 2 apples, 50 plus 50 will give me a dollar. Right, 50 cents plus 50 cents will give me a dollar, right? If I was to get $3 worth- If I was to get three dollars worth, would I get fifteen apples? The answer is no, okay? Because only two apples gave me a dollar, so two more apples will give me two dollars. And then two more apples after that will give me three dollars, alright? That would be six apples, I would know that my math is way off, okay? So don't get too hasty when it comes to these questions, okay? Set it up correctly, in this case, we're gonna put the fifteen on the outside, and we are going to put the three on the inside, okay? Fifteen for three dollars, alright? I know this doesn't look natural to the eye, fifteen doesn't go into three. So what we're gonna have to do is we're gonna have to add a zero in here. Boom, fifteen does go into thirty, right? A total of two times. Two times fifteen is thirty itself. Right, giving us no remainders, okay? Point two, point two is the same as point two zero, if you wanted to add a zero over here just to make it look more natural, right, which is also the same as twenty cents. Twenty cents could also be written point two zero. Okay, so C would be our correct answer instead of A. Does that make sense? How we looking, how we feeling? C would be the correct answer. Alright. I hope everybody's still with us, so go ahead and screenshot if you need a screenshot. And then let's jump into the next one. Oh, my bad, my bad, my bad, my bad, I'm tripping. I wasn't a fan of this question, but I guess we'll do it just for, just for the heck of it. Your convoy has to travel a straight line across four point seven grid squares on a map, on a military map. Every grid square equals one thousand meters. How many meters will your convoy travel? Let me see what y'all come up with for an answer, let me give y'all like twenty seconds on this one. Let me see how y'all are feeling on this one. Alright, that should be about twenty seconds, right? So, your convoy has to travel a straight line across four point seven grid squares. So how many grid squares does this convoy need to go? Listen, another thing, right? If you don't quite understand the question, me personally, I like to substitute words, right? So if I don't know what a convoy is, cuz I'm not in the military, let's say, I would just substitute it and say a car, a car has to travel a straight line across four point seven grid squares, okay? So how far is a car going? It's going four point seven grid squares, okay? And what it, what does, how far basically does one grid square measure to, right? It says every grid square equals a thousand meters, so we know that one grid square. One grid square equals a thousand meters. Alright. So, what will we do next? We would take this thousand meters, cuz we wanna know how many meters will your convoy travel? Well, if one grid square equals one thousand meters, and we have four point seven grid squares, what we would do is we would take that thousand meters, and we will have to multiply by four, oops, come back, four point seven. Multiplication would be the function, okay? I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm gonna teach you guys a shortcut. All you have to do is count how many zeros is on this number, okay? There are three zeros on the number one thousand. And then what you do is you go over to this decimal and you move the decimal, one, two, three zeros to the right, okay? Giving us a answer four thousand seven hundred, okay? Y'all gotta cut, y'all gotta get kinda, you know, comfortable with multiplying things by one, multiplying things by ten, a hundred, a thousand, a million, it doesn't matter, okay? Whenever you're multiplying something that starts with one, and it has like, you know, a few zeros at the end of it, like ten, a hundred, a thousand, just look at how many zeros there are, and then move the decimal place however many zeros places that there are to the right, okay? So, four point seven would become four thousand seven hundred. Let's go to our answer key. Oh, look at that, D would be the correct answer. I hope I didn't confuse y'all with that last trick, alright? Um. If we was to write this one out, four point seven, we know that one times anything is itself, right? So, one times anything is itself, so we have a four and we have a seven, and then these three zeros. Oh, I think I just messed my own self up. Uh, four point seven, right? Boom, and then those zeros will drop down and we move the decimal place, one, two, three. Okay, giving you the same thing, I almost wrote an extra zero in there, my bad, y'all. But, four thousand seven hundred is the correct answer, not forty-seven thousand. Okay, still rusty, please forgive me. Alright. Looks like everybody is still surviving, so maybe one more question, right? Let's see. Y'all probably already checked out, right? Y'all probably like, look, man, all this math is kinda burning my brain, can't do it. Alright, let's end on this question then. Let's end on this question. An army battalion in Hawaii has four companies. Two of the companies, Alpha and Charlie, have seventy soldiers each. Bravo Company has forty-four soldiers, while Delta Company has eighty-four. What is the average number of soldiers in a company in this battalion? Leave y'all, leave y'all to it for, you know, a minute or so. And then let me know how y'all are doing, how y'all are feeling. So the question is asking for the average. The average, the average. What is the average? While y'all are figuring that out, I just wanna let y'all know, thank y'all for joining this live session. For those who are participating, for those who are getting value out of the content, uh, thank y'all. Don't be afraid to hit that like button, don't be afraid to, uh, hit that subscribe button for sure, so that way you can get notified. Sorry, hit the bell icon next to the subscri- subscribe button, so that way you can get notified every time I drop a video. Every time I come on here and do a live session, um, and participate in each one, you know, it's always a pleasure to have y'all, so. Thank you, thank you, thank you for each and every person who supports. And, um, let's see if we can figure out this last question before we leave here for the day. Alright, so, let's talk about it. An army battalion in Hawaii has four companies, right? Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, Delta, let's start with that. Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, Delta. And then it goes on to let us know how many is in each, right? So, Alpha and Charlie each have seventy soldiers. Bravo Company has forty-four, so Bravo looks like it's a small one. And what else do we have? Delta Company has eighty-four. So I just wanna let y'all know, anytime that you are doing a question that is talking about the average, how you find that is you add each one up, add up all of them, and then divide by how many you just added, okay? So if that doesn't make sense to you, I'm gonna go ahead and break it down for you actually, right now, okay? So, what did I say? Whenever we're solving for average, we are going to add up everything, and then we are going to divide by how many things we added, so. Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, Delta, that's four things, okay? We're gonna be dividing by four, alright? So let's add these up. I don't think y'all can see my cursor, so I have to write this in here so y'all know, so I don't lose anybody, boom, okay? Let's add it up, zero plus four plus zero plus four. Gives us eight. Seven plus four is eleven, plus seven is eighteen, plus eight is twenty-six. Hope I did that right, y'all math check me, right? Two hundred and sixty-eight, we're about to find out. Now, I'll take that two hundred and sixty-eight. And we have to divide now by four in order to find the average. Four does not go into two, but it does go into twenty-six, how many times? Six times, right? Giving us twenty-four. We subtract these two things, twenty-six minus twenty-four gives us two remainder, we drop the eight down. Twenty-eight. Four goes into twenty-eight, how many times? Seven times, seven times four is twenty-eight. Subtract these two. We do not have a, oh shoot. We do not have a remainder, I hope y'all can still see me and hear me. Alright, if y'all can, here we go, we got an answer of sixty-seven, okay? So we go to our answer key, look at that, what awaits us? There's no better feeling than solving an arithmetic reasoning question and seeing your answer in the answer key. I'm telling you, it's just like, oh my gosh, thank you, like I'm, I'm on the right track, I'm doing something right, right? So sixty-seven soldiers is the average, sixty-seven soldiers is our average. If we have four companies and seventy in Alpha, forty-four in Bravo, seventy in Charlie, and eighty-four in Delta, two hundred and sixty-eight soldiers total. We divide that by four, two hundred and sixty-eight divided by four gives us sixty-seven soldiers on average in each company. Not too bad, right? I don't think that was too bad. You know, y'all be seeming like y'all tracking, you know, y'all, y'all. I don't think that was too bad, what y'all think? Pretty decent, medium, easy, hard? I think it was alright, man. So, let me see, how long we been on here? Oh yikes, we've been on here for like, almost an hour, let me see. Do we have one more in us? Or should we cut it? That is the question. You know, this question looks a little annoying actually, let me, let's run it, let's run it and then we gonna cut it after this one. Alright, just because this question looks irritating. Alright. Billy left the house without his wallet. Billy sounds like me, alright. When he went to purchase his lunch, he had to dig into his change stash to buy it. How much did he have left? If he had fifteen quarters, fifteen dimes, twenty-two nickels, and twelve pennies, and the lunch cost five dollars and fifty-two cents, okay? So, my man left his wallet at home, he probably ran to the car or something. You know, went inside his, you know, everybody has their coins stashed inside their, uh, you know, their little cup holder places type stuff, right? So my man grabbed fifteen quarters, fifteen dimes, twenty-two nickels, and twelve pennies, right? So how much did he have left over? Let me see if y'all can figure this one out. Let me give y'all like fifteen seconds more and then we about to solve it together as a team. Let me see what y'all got for me. Alright, let's jump into it. Oh, my bad, let me clear this, I'm over here tripping. Alright. So when he went to buy his lunch, he had to dig into his change stash, alright? How much did he have left? Fifteen quarters, alright, so, we know that he had fifteen quarters. How much does a quarter, how much is a quarter worth? Twenty-five cents, right? Boom, so let's multiply, cuz we wanna know what is the worth of twenty, of fifteen quarters, right? That are worth twenty-five cents each, how to figure out how to word that? So five times five, we know it's twenty-five. Five times one is five, plus two is seven. We're gonna put our placeholder zero like we always do, two times five is ten. Two times one is two. We're gonna add these together. Two seventy-five. However, because we have this decimal place that is two places to the left, we're gonna move our decimal place two places over, giving us two dollars seventy-five cents. Boom, can't forget that decimal place. Alright, so this is our quarters section. Alright, let's talk about how many dimes, right? So he had fifteen dimes, why did I write that backwards? Alright, and how much is each dime worth? Ten cents each, okay? And then we have to multiply, alright? Didn't I just tell y'all about multiplying by ten? Literally, we could just take this one zero and add it to the right of that five on the fifteen, okay? However, for the sake of things, zero times five is zero. Zero times one is zero, we're gonna put our placeholder zero, and then anything times one is itself, so one times five is five, one times one is one. Add these together, you get one fifty. Look at that decimal place that's over here, it's two places, right? So we're gonna move it back over here two places to the left, giving us a dollar fifty cents. Okay, in dimes. Let me go ahead, looks like I'm writing slant it, boy. Go ahead and make another column for our nickels, okay? Twenty-two nickels, how much is each nickel worth? Five cents. We are going to multiply. Five times two is ten. Five times two again is ten, plus one is eleven. Put our placeholder zero, zero times anything is zero. Drop all this down. We get one-one-zero, however, our decimal is two places to the left, so we gotta move it back two places to the left, giving us a dollar and ten cents. Alright, and then what else do we have? Twelve pennies. Just to say I did it, twelve pennies worth one cent each, gives us twelve cents, y'all know that, okay? You got twelve pennies, he's got twelve cents, okay? Alright, so I didn't really leave myself room, I hope y'all can still see what I can see, right? But what we have to do now is we have to add all of these together, okay? Ooh. It's all good, what I'll do is I will just bring everything over here, so. We're gonna add our dimes, which is a dollar and ten cents, we're gonna add our We're gonna add our dimes, which is a dollar and ten cents, we're gonna add our. I'm sorry, I think I said that wrong, we're gonna add our nickels, which is a dollar and ten cents worth, we're gonna add our dimes, which is a dollar and fifty cents worth. We are gonna add our quarters, which is two dollars and seventy-five cents worth. We add all these together, two plus five. Seven, one plus one is two, plus five is seven, plus seven is fourteen. Carry the one up here, one plus one plus one is three, plus two is five. Drop our decimal point down, in his stash, he had five dollars and forty-seven. Uh, just kidding, that doesn't sound right. His lunch cost five dollars and fifty-two cents, so where did I go wrong? Let's see if we can find our mistake, my mistake, right? So, was it adding these, this is seven, this is two, this is five, that is seven, da-da-da, fourteen, ba-ba-ba. One, two, three, five, five dollars, alright, so my math is obviously wrong at some point. We know that it's not the pennies because we got twelve cents, right? Twenty-two nickels at five cents apiece, let's see if my math is incorrect. So, two times five is ten. Carry the one, five times two again is ten, we got eleven, boom, boom, a dollar and ten cents, alright. Dimes, dollar fifty, quarters. Five times five is twenty-five. Uh, five times one is five, plus two is seven. Bring our zero, two times five, ten, bring the one. Two times one is two, but there should have been a one that I carried over here. So this two should have actually been a three. Boom. Found you, boom. That should have been a three, meaning that this should have been a three, meaning that this should have been a three. Boom, boy, making myself look silly on here, three dollars and seventy-five cents, meaning that this guy over here should have also been a three. Boom, meaning that this five should be a six. Listen, I'm only human too, alright, I'm only human too. But I'm actually happy that happened on the last question, alright, just to show you that these things happen. When it does happen though, just make sure that you backtrack your steps like I did. Uh, so that way you can find where you may have forgot to carry the one in my case, right? So six dollars and forty-seven cents, is that what the question is asking? No, the question is asking us, how much did he have left over if the meal cost five dollars and fifty-two cents? So we're gonna take this six dollars and forty-seven cents, we are gonna subtract it by five dollars and fifty-two cents. I'm running out of space, so bear with me. Why does my disciple keep disappearing? Alright, boom, seven minus two gives us five. We have to borrow one from this six because four cannot, we can't take five from four, right? So this six becomes a five, let me write it small. Boom, and then this four becomes a fourteen, fourteen minus five. Decimals drop down, five minus five. Is nothing, so ninety-five cents, okay? Let's go to our answer key, do we have a ninety-five cent option? We sure do, so this guy gets ninety-five cents left over and change. Some of y'all, if y'all made it to this part of the video, you're probably looking at me like, like my man, no, that two should have been a three. You know, or I bet some of y'all didn't even catch it, you probably wrote two down also, you know? But, we have our answer, it's ninety-five cents, okay? So this question is just annoying, like I said it was, uh, tedious because you have to figure out each. Coin, you know, the value of each coin, so quarters, dimes, nickels, pennies, add them all up and then subtract. From the total, uh, cost of the meal, which was five dollars and fifty-two cents, giving you ninety-five cents. So y'all be honest, how was this, how was this question? Do y'all feel like it was, you feel like it was decent, you feel like it was challenging, do you feel like it was annoying? Or did my mistake just really mess, mess y'all up in the first place? If so, I apologize, okay, definitely wasn't intentional, but I'm glad that we were able to make it into a. La, teachable moment, alright, even for myself. Alright, so, woo! We made it through, we made it through what, six, seven, eight type questions, something like that? We made it through, so I just wanna say thank y'all for participating in today's study session. Uh, if you would like more study sessions like this, then please, please, please. Comment somewhere, shoot me a message saying like, hey, that was actually beneficial. I think I read some comment on a video saying like, hey, like, I really like. When you go step by step with the questions, you know, so if you're watching this during the live, then fantastic. If you're watching this, um, on the live replay, then also fantastic, you know? But whatever I gotta do to help y'all is gonna be the goal, so thank y'all for watching, I just wanna say. I hope that each and every one of y'all are, uh, getting something valuable from this content. If so, share it with a friend, hit that subscribe button, do whatever you can to support the channel, right? I really appreciate each and every one of y'all, uh, always remember that success is made by actions, so get up. Go grind, I will see you next time.